Good evening. Welcome to the rescheduled city council meeting. This is Tuesday, not Monday. It's Tuesday, May the 27th at 7:00 PM. We are in the council chambers. Mr. Shamir, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Rosmire, and the roll call. Mr. Arnold?
Here.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Here.
Ms. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Koz?
Here.
Mr. Shamir?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Zuber?
Here.
Mayor Spetzel?
Here.
Law Director Ebert?
Here.
Finance Director Crossy?
Here.
Public Works Director Liskovic?
Here.
Thank you. We need the approval of the minutes from March the 3rd. It's also a special council meeting on March the 24th, 2025. If you had a chance to review them, any changes, additions, subtractions? Okay, they will stand then as published. Thank you. Mrs. Rosmire, and have you received some correspondence?
I don't have any correspondence to report. Thank you.
Colleagues, any correspondence that you want to share? Mr. Shamir?
Last week, I had a number of correspondence from residents in the West Winds or residents on Brunswick for an issue of access and potential issues with with driving on a one-lane road, out of communication with Mr. Liskovic, and he kindly enough resolved the issue and 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 the controls are now there and there are detours. But I also received a number of complaints from residents within the West Winds of large potholes, and that's been brought up and submitted. And those large potholes are now quite more visible, especially to more residents, because they're traveling through sections that are now in the detour area. So there are, I mean, these are large chunks that are missing, concrete sitting on the side of the road. So it would be great to get those issues addressed. Thank you.
Mr. Liskovic, would this be a case where the street cleaner needs to go down first and remove the rubble?
Depending on the size, it would be. Currently, crews are in the Surrey area where we've had complete failures and we're looking to kind of wrap things up there and then we'll be transitioning over towards the West Winds, essentially the eastern end of town, West Winds, some of the other areas that we've talked about.
So there's a focus there that you're aware of?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other correspondence anyone wants to share?
Yes, go ahead. Several complaints about streets. Surrey and Carriage are a couple of them, Gregel and was it Maple Cliff? Also complaints about short-term rentals and the potential for having multiples along the same street, and the residents are very concerned about that.
That also brings up a parking issue. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just to remind the residents, we can park on one side of the road, not both, so the safety services can come through. You want to park on the side that does not have hydrants. Anyone else want to share some correspondence? Okay, very good. We're going to move along then. Reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Yesterday, we had a very successful Memorial Day remembrance ceremony and parade. I want to thank everyone who attended. We have, we had great attendance as we honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice to provide us the freedoms that we enjoy today. The day began with a moving and somber ceremony at the, by the American Legion Post 211 at our cemetery. Not, it's not a well-attended event, but it's well worth attending next year if you have an opportunity, followed by the parade at 10 o'clock, and then we had a ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park with the flyover of two F-16s out of Toledo. Our community is blessed with, was blessed with perfect weather, tremendous attendance. I want to thank specifically our American Legion Post 211, our police, fire, public works, recreation, and communication departments for making it a safe and memorable day. Just, it was one of those days of small-town Americana, I believe. It was just a wonderful day. I also want to congratulate the Learwood Middle School Boys Lacrosse Team on winning the Division IV state title this year. Congratulations to Cameron Diddy and all the lacrosse boys that did a well job, or well-done job and made Avon Lake proud. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Mr. Zuber?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. Based on the mona rain that we've gotten and it's supposed to rain again tonight, if you could contact the county health department about mosquito control, because I think that just based on past years, when we get this kind of rain, we're going to have a mosquito issue. So if there's any way that we could be proactive in it, and if, Mr. Koz, you could put that on your next committee meeting, because I just know we're going to have a problem with it based on the rains that we've had.
And I think that also is going to be a reminder to the HOAs, you have retention-detention ponds, you're going to want to monitor them. There are deer pucks that they could be speaking to the health department about. And they do, they also do testing, because there's seven different types of mosquitoes to make sure that you don't have a mosquito that's going to be carrying Lyme disease. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on now to council president's report. The next CCM is going to be June the 2nd at 7:00 PM. There's going to be a work session there, and it's going to be by the tree commission, and it's going to be about the Avon Lake Big Tree Contest. They're going to be telling us all about it and how it works for the county. The next council meeting will be June the 9th at 7:00 PM. Any questions? Okay, yes, Mr. Zuber?
Madam Chair, if you could put on for the next collective committee meeting, the update of Chapter 220, I'd like to have us move that as quickly as possible, go through the three readings, so hopefully we can pass it by the time we go on break, so that can be in effect afterwards.
It's already on the, it's already on the CCM?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, any other comments from anyone? Okay, we will move now on to the law director.
No report this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. The finance director?
No report this evening, but I will have information for the next CCM.
Perfect. Public Works Director?
Yes, this evening I had a handful of things. First, I distributed an updated schedule to everybody for the ALPS Phase 2, based on a schedule we received from RJ Platten. Just some items to note, currently we're in the submittal acceptance phase for the equipment and coloring of the equipment. Weather permitting for RJ Platten, they look to start site work July 7th, the week of July 7th. And then again, weather permitting, lead time permitting, all that, they're looking to have the first piece of equipment in early September in the project. And I will distribute this to everybody also digitally, so you can have it. Additionally, Avon Lake Regional Water had opened their bids for their bundle project for this year, which encompassed the replacement of the electric road bridge. That component actually came in very favorable. They're still through, working through the process of going through everything and looking at all that, but I just wanted to give an update on that. In addition, from, just as a refresher too, there are a handful of streets that will be reconstructed, which are north side of Lake Road as a result of this project due to waterline replacement, and they include North Point, Rosewood, Bonneville, Bonnieview, sorry, Colony, and Parkwood, Parkland, that right in there, forgot which one it was, but it said north, those north quadrant there. Last week, we opened bids for the contracted crack seal. We had two bidders, very responsive. Those will be coming to the Public Service Committee early in June for review and recommendation for award. This week, we have bid openings for the materials purchases that the city uses for road repairs, such as asphalt, concrete, and aggregates. And then next week, we have the opening for the construction of Walker Road Phase 5. And that's all I have this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Liskovic? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on now to our standing committees. The very first one will be Building and Utilities with Ms. Gentry.
Yes, we had our meeting for May. We discussed the updates from the NOPEC STAR program, proceed status of the Edgewater Outfall and the Colliard Connection, also working on the demolition ordinance. There are a couple more changes, but that should be wrapped up here pretty soon.
Okay, and I just wanted to remind council people, if you have anything with suspension of the rule that's coming up, if you could explain why it is suspended, the rule during this period of time, that would be great. Anything else, Ms. Gentry?
Uh, no.
Okay, any questions for Buildings and Utilities? Seeing none, we're going to move on now to the Economic Development with Mr. Arnold.
Thank you. We had an Economic Development Committee meeting on May 13th. There were two items discussed at the meeting, both on the agenda tonight. The first one is 25-101, which is the reimbursement agreement between Avon Lake Environmental Redevelopment Group and the city. These expenses will not exceed $310,000, 100, 310, 175,000 dollars. These will include our professionals, Burns and Octor, Verdantis, and Mr. Todd Davis, who is with us tonight. These expenses are retroactive January 1st, 2025. They're, once, once this would pass, within five days, there'd be a $50,000 deposit to the city. Whenever those expenses fall below $10,000, there'll be an additional 50,000 deposited moving forward each time. Within the legislation, there's also a budget that outlines what their, the initial budget for the interim development agreement reimbursement. That's really have, all I have on this. Mr. Davis, here, I'd like for him to say a few words about the agreement as well.
Very good. Mr. Davis, could come forward. Thank you.
Sure, yes, Mr. Davis. And good evening. Again, Todd Davis outside council to City of Avon Lake in connection with the brownfield redevelopment of the former Avon Lake power plant. Just to remind everyone, the structure of this transaction was through the interim development agreement, which was passed by city council. It set up a, a structure for the general redevelopment process of the power plant itself. As part of that, and what was important to the city, was that the city was required to advance absolutely no costs in connection with the redevelopment of the plant itself, including for outside professionals. The mechanism that was set up through that process was to, was to use a reimbursement agreement, a professional services reimbursement agreement, that was to reimburse the professionals as Councilman Arnold just addressed. The budget associated with that was $310,175 as an initial budget. That could be amended from time to time, and that was not to be unreasonably conditioned or with, or approval for those budget amendments to be withheld from ALER, and that is the reimbursement agreement that is before council tonight. Last week, in connection with the council's review of that agreement, Councilman Shamir made a presentation about some of the concerns that he had articulated as key risks associated with that reimbursement agreement. In connection with that presentation, I was asked by the administration to prepare a memo responding to those concerns, which was sent to city council for your consideration. From my perspective, I don't believe that there were material risks. There are certainly some risks that Councilman Shamir had identified through that memo, but in the context of this transaction, I think that those are just traditional risks inherent of any agreement that two parties would enter into. And I think that we've well covered those risks in the context of both the interim development agreement, as well as the professional services reimbursement agreement. Certainly happy to, to address any questions in connection with that, which I certainly anticipate having more than a few from Councilman Shamir and others. But the approval of this agreement will effectively allow reimbursement of those costs to occur, and also allow us to start the process of due diligence and the finalization of the purchase and sale agreement between the city and ALER, so we can really get into the nitty-gritty of evaluating the merits of this transaction. So from that perspective, I certainly would, would suggest that council approve this, this agreement that is pending. And with that, happy to answer any questions or concerns in connection with, with the agreement itself.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to other council people, and then we will end up coming back to Mr. Arnold. Anybody else have any comments? Mr. Koz, you're at the far end.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Davis, thank you for being here. I was not prepared to vote yes on the suspension of the rules tonight based on some of the questions that were brought up by Mr. Shamir until we received a, a response back similar to what we did. So I appreciate you putting the time and the effort in to respond to the issues that Mr. Shamir raised. So I appreciate that. And just to say, I am prepared to vote to suspend the rules on this tonight based on that. But I do have one question. One of the things that was mentioned during the, some of the questions about this that were brought forward was the city's right to select our consultants, our experts. Can you just kind of, it's in the document?
Yes.
But can you talk a little bit about that and what your opinion is on that as it relates to this agreement?
Yeah, I think it's crystal clear in the agreement that the city has the unilateral right, without input from ALER or anyone else, to select its own professionals in practice. And in fact, we have selected our own professionals in connection with this, this project. ALER has never pushed back or suggested that we hire anyone else. Certainly, it's up to the city and city council to hire whomever they choose. ALER has never made a comment with respect to it, and obviously, this is just a reimbursement agreement. So the reimbursement agreement, well, ALER has the right to, to review bills that are tendered. They only have the right to reject those bills, which are unreasonable in the context of the bills themselves. But again, those bills would be tendered pursuant to a budget, which has already been approved by ALER. So I think there's very limited opportunity for the rejection of those bills as being unreasonable. And if so, they have to demonstrate that they're unreasonable bills. It's possible. Councilman Shamir identified that as a potential risk in his memo. I think that's a limited risk, and as long as we, we follow the mechanism articulated in those agreements, I think we'll be adequately covered. More than adequate, more than adequately covered.
Mr. Koz, anything else?
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else stand up? Mr. Shamir?
First question. Also, the property appraiser will be paid out of this as well?
Correct, reimbursed.
Is there a limitation on any company that can be selected? This is according to yourself, so. So they have put a stipulation on who you cannot select?
There, there's a mechanism for select, it has to be reasonably approved by ALER in terms of the appraisal, absolutely.
And they have identified a company that they would not approve?
They've identified a company that they would not approve?
Approve.
Now, we asked them to tender a list of several appraisal firms, which they would approve, and that would be up to the city to select one, which we would, we would prefer to choose for an independent appraisal.
So they gave the list of companies that?
We asked them to tender a list that would be acceptable to them.
And is, was there any company that they named specifically not to be selected?
No. Not, not to my knowledge, no.
Well, in the executive session, we had a discussion, and that's why I, I went back through the agreement.
You'll have to, no.
I'm, I'm going to leave that, and I'm, I will have a discussion with you separately.
Happily, but
Perfect.
There was no, there was, just to be clear, there, there was no firm that they refused to agree to, one, one which we tendered as someone we wanted to hire.
Okay, so we gave a list, or they gave us a list?
They gave us a list, but we asked them to tender a list.
Yeah. So we asked for them to tell us who can appraise the property. So we asked, we asked the fox to keep an eye on the hen house?
That's not how I would put it. We asked, again, per the agreement, there has to be a mutual approval of who the appraiser's going to be. They tendered three outstanding firms, which I would independently suggest that we might consider hiring. They're top-tier firms in, in the state of Ohio, one of which is the head of appraisers of, of the Appraisal Association of the State of Ohio. Another is one that is a go-to appraisal firm for developers across the state, whom we've used, and many law firms that I'm familiar with have used in similar circumstances. And, and a third firm, which is a top-tier firm.
Now, these are the four entities that this contract reimbursement covers, correct? So the city's brownfield legal advisor?
Yes.
And property negotiator for property purchase?
It also includes envi-
Environmental law firm.
Environmental and financial professionals who may be retained in connection with TIF evaluation.
So effectively, there's $310,000 currently defined to be utilized by this group of professionals. And that fund is coming through ALERG?
It's being reimbursed through a budget that was established as the initial phase of due diligence in connection with property.
So our, our strategy team and negotiation team is, is effectively funded through a mechanism by ALERG?
No, they're, they're re, the city is reimbursed. So, so let me understand what you're saying. Your suggestion would be that the city, number one, not get reimbursed. You think that that's a better approach, certainly, if I may. The, the city has the right to, to not be reimbursed, should the city think that that's a better approach. I personally don't think that's a good approach. I, I think it's, one of the, one of the foundational issues that the city had was that they didn't want to spend its own money in connection with this project, and so we negotiated a structure for reimbursement. So I think that's a great deal for the city.
It depends. It really depends. So for $300,000, we sat down at a negotiation table to purchase a remediated site for 15 million, plus another 15 to regrade it, where, based on our ordinances, if they want to rezone that, what do we get? 20 acres of land? So these are, these are, these are the problems that I've got.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
The green space is being purchased for 15 plus 15, so $15 million purchase price, $15 million regrading and/or whatever else that we want to call it.
Any improvements to the park to make it a fully functional, wonderful, beautiful park?
So for $30 million is, we're picking up green space that would effectively increase the value for the developers and make the area more developer-friendly. Yet, we are not negotiating the free release of that land based on us approving zoning. That is a fundamental problem that is there. And the TIF also repays ALERG for that $310,000. Is that correct?
If it's approved.
If it's approved, $310,000 goes to ALERG.
As a reimbursement, that's correct.
It's a reimbursement. So what we're doing is, we're doing a bridge financing of sorts?
Well, it's paid for with taxes that would be generated from the project and from the hundreds of millions of dollars that are being invested through this process. So, you know, again, from my perspective, this is a tremendous opportunity and a deal for the city. I, I don't know why you don't see it the same way. I mean, you seem to think that the better approach would be to rely solely and exclusively on being tough with ALER regarding zoning, and that that's a better approach, and you think you'll get a better development that way for the city or a better deal. And that, that's your right to feel that way. Not everybody agrees with you.
Well, that is, that is correct. Not everybody agrees. But every time that we discuss with ALERG on issues, even when it came to implosion, we discussed, well, let's delay it. The concept of litigation came back up. So what we're doing, we're opening ourselves back into a potential for litigation through this mechanism. So if, you know, we talk about reasonable standards.
You say litigation, litigation over what? I mean, define what-
I mean, listen, you're-
But litigation, you can do this in obvious, litigation over nothing here, over
Burns, Okner-
issues. I mean, there could always be litigation.
Burns, Okner gave a recommendation based on the mayor's reaching out to them about the implosion. And we were told that we couldn't stop them because it would lead to litigation. You know, the safety of the city and the results, we have no control on what they do. So if you're telling me that ALERG will do what is best for the community, I haven't seen it. So there is no trust. When we sat here in December, December 19th, to be exact, on that implosion evening, when the winds were flowing, pushing into the city, and we said, you know, we can delay it by a couple of days until the wind changes, they said, no. So what is there that is going to hold up in this process? When you put reasonable standards, reasonable, what is reasonable standard?
Reason, I noted in your presentation that you objected to the word reasonable. As a lawyer, 100 out of 100 lawyers questioned about whether they use the word reasonable in, in a, in a development agreement would say, yes. It, it's a well-articulated, often-used- in a development agreement would say, yes, it's a well-articulated, often-used qualifier with respect to almost any issue you could think of. So I don't need to define what reasonable is in an agreement. I use it appropriately, and I think it's been appropriately used. It doesn't need definition, and I think that this is a well-crafted document.
Well, and I'm going to say one more thing, and I'm going to end it at that because I've actually put this thing together just before I came with my questions with respect to your comments. And when we discuss good faith, I haven't seen good faith, not from day one. And when we discuss the potential for litigation, I still see it out there. And, you know, Burns Ockner doesn't have a non-compete with the city so that they can go out and work for ALERG or whoever else in the future that develops that field. That is one of the questions that I ask. And everyone on that list are free to go and do whatever they want to do in the future with respect to that property.
That's not correct.
Okay. Please enlighten me.
Happily. First of all, Burns Ockner, their obligation is to represent the city exclusively. They would have a conflict in representing another party whose interests would be adverse to the city. If... And they could not work for any other party that... Where there would potentially be a conflict without getting a waiver from the city.
There would have to be a waiver. It was part of the agreement. They'd have to have a waiver from the city. That was brought up early on.
And the city could always consider whether, just like they could change something in an agreement, and they can amend an agreement, but it would have to go to the law director and would have to be approved by the city process. So they don't... And just to make a distinction with respect to something else that you said. Putting the implosion issues aside, because they're... One of the issues associated with the implosion is that the city didn't have any currently articulated ordinance or standards in connection with governing the implosion. The difference between that situation and this situation is that we have a well-crafted purchase agreement that you could take to court, and in the event that there was a dispute, obviously, if we've done our jobs, then I think we would be protected by that agreement. That's something that the city did not have going into the implosion.
Well, the city had a modeling done, and it was agreed. We agreed. We sat with them. We agreed that this would be the condition to do it, and they still decided to go ahead and go against the results. And at the end of the day, we have...
I'm sorry.
At the end of the day, it was not good faith. And we're talking about good faith. And to be honest with you, you gave me a book, so I'm returning you a favor. This is my gift to you, and I actually spoke with Ms. Spivak, who wrote Backroom Deals in our backyards. And I don't want to be a... One of these cities in the future. And my recommendation is, take it the full three readings. Allow it to go through the three full readings. There is no need to push this thing through. No one, no one is dying out there. And we want to push this thing through a single reading. And I'm sorry, I would say, take it for the full three readings, and I'd like to leave this here for you. This is my gift to you.
So if the implication is that there was some backroom deal that was cut that was not fully discussed or debated, I find that offensive?
I did not say that you...
No, you did.
No, I did not. I said, here is a book. Backroom Deals in our Backyards.
Excuse me. We have the floor up here. Thank you.
And I bought this after having a discussion with the author. So I don't want... I did not say that we have. But when I asked a question about the strategy on our negotiation, when I asked a question about the mechanisms that were used... And please allow me to finish.
No, sure.
You have on numerous occasions said that it wasn't done by the city. It wasn't the city's strategy to come up with the $15 million to purchase. It was a strategy that came about. Strategies don't come about. Strategies are laid out, and if you don't have a plan for your strategy, I'm sorry. This is something that you and I disagree, and I'm going to leave it. Thank you.
No problem. I mean, just to respond. You seem to have a fundamental disagreement with respect to what the value of that property is to the city and what the value of that public park is. To me, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city to acquire a strategic asset along the lake, which it may never get an opportunity to do again. We may... I don't disagree with you. I would have preferred on the implosion, much preferred, that they had adhered to what we thought they were going to do in connection with the implosion. I was not happy with the fact that they went forward with that, just to be on the record. Was very unhappy. Thought that they should have done exactly what we talked about. So on that, we completely agree. But I'm not going to conflate that with what I think is a tremendous opportunity and a deal for the city in terms of controlling one of the most strategic pieces of real estate that you have in the community. My job was to come in and to help figure out a way to make this acquisition work, to help a very substantial redevelopment opportunity and project occur in the city. I personally think that having a combative approach with ALERG is not going to advance the project itself. I think that it may very well end up in ALERG retaining that piece of property and us not... And that may be fine for you. And I don't want to personalize this. That may be, if the city decides that that's what it prefers to do, they don't have to go forward and approve this agreement. But I think that the city wants this deal to happen. And you've asked me to come up with the best possible structure and opportunity to get this... The city is not out of pocket paying for that strategic piece of real estate, and that's what we've done in this agreement.
Thank you. Anybody else here? Because I do want to say something. I'm going to regroup because the topic we have before us, a lot has been talked about in a lot of different areas. And tonight, the topic before us is simply a reimbursement agreement. And one of the reasons why... And I might have people up here that might disagree with what I'm going to say, and that's fine. My opinion is, one of the reasons why this is before us as a suspension of the rule, an emergency passage, is because this is now May the 27th, and this is a look back to January 1st, 2025. And this takes care of finances through July and possibly beyond that. But we have a budget that calls out a reimbursement for our consultants. That's all it is. It is nothing else. There's all the other things we've discussed. It's simply a reimbursement. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mr. Arnold. Oh, Mr. Smith? Yes.
Yeah, I do have a couple of comments and questions. One is, relative to the term reasonable, I would agree with Mr. Davis regarding that term. Where you tend to see it more often, though, is unreasonable, where someone's consent should not be unreasonable, be withheld in contracts. See that a lot, particularly in landlord cases where someone wants to sub-lease a property. So I don't see that as a huge issue. I do think at some point, and I don't know when that is, but that would be for the administration and the consultants to determine. I'd like to see us have an executive session to discuss what negotiations we have relative to this project are going forward. I think it's important that we have a clear understanding of where we're going and exactly what the situation is. We've got this TIF out there. We have $15 million for parkland, another $15 to upgrade it, which is all going to be part of a TIF, which comes from the property and its improvements and the taxes that will come in through it. And then the last thing I would like to know... I understand that this is for money that goes back in time, but I'd like to understand why we need to suspend the rules right now relative to this. It's been since January 1st. It's already now May 20. What is today? The 27th?
27th.
Why all of a sudden we need to suspend the rules on it? So if someone could try to convince me of why I should vote in favor of the suspension of the rules, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr... Before we go to Mr. Arnold, Mr. Mayor, is there anything that you would like to add to this?
I'd let Todd speak to it also. So we have an interim development agreement that currently council passed. We are working on a purchase agreement. All that work has been stopped until this reimbursable agreement is approved. So we're not moving forward currently on any action until the disagreement is approved. We want to find out environmentally what's on that property. We want to find out how we're going to move forward. To your point with the executive session, we definitely want to do that. We can't do that now because we haven't been able to move forward yet. I know that any private vertical developer is not going to move on this until the city decides what they want to do. We can't decide what we want to do until we have a purchase agreement in place. So the timeliness of it goes to moving the project forward. And I'll let Mr. Davis elaborate if he'd like on that part of it.
No, that's exactly right. I mean, right now, we're stuck. We're not moving forward. We're not looking at the environmental reports. We've got access to due diligence because that access was provided through the interim development agreement. However, we did not run up the bills or start that process, although it's identified in the budget, because we wanted to make sure that the reimbursement agreement was in place and that the city would get reimbursed for both its legal fees and for environmental consulting fees. So Mayor, I certainly agree with your comments and Councilman Smith. That's the reason for the urgency. I mean, as you know, and I know some of your background as an attorney, momentum in transactions are important, and I fear that we're losing momentum with every month that passes with nothing happening.
Any further discussions? I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Arnold. Mr. Arnold, do you want to close it out?
Yeah, I mean, this is a reimbursement agreement. It's one component of our interim development agreement. That was in the interim development agreement when we passed it months ago. So this is just part of the process. I understand that some council members get a little nervous about passing things on first reading, but we talked about it at the Economic Development Committee meeting. Mr. Davis was there. We talked about it again last week at the CCM. I know there's some concerns that Mr. Shamir brought up, but that's the reason why we're looking to suspend the rules tonight.
Let me add one additional thing before we close this part.
Sure.
Because it was raised, and I think it's worth discussing at least briefly. And that's one of conflicts of interest. And it was raised in Councilman Shamir's presentation last week. And just to be clear, there is no conflict of interest between professionals stemming from this reimbursement agreement. The professionals are being retained by the City of Avon Lake. The reimbursement, not to be confused, the city gets reimbursed for the costs associated with the bills. But the duties of the professionals 100% are to the City of Avon Lake and to no one else. And as I put in my memo, which I think should be crystal clear, number one, from a lawyer-to-client perspective, we have an absolute duty to advocate on behalf of the city. We cannot be influenced by ALERG or anyone else. That's just part of our ethics and our rules. And to the extent that the city believes that a professional is not acting exclusively in the best interest of the city, then that professional should be dismissed. Point blank. But I just wanted to clarify because there was a concern about... There was a question about whether the fact that there's a reimbursement agreement on behalf of the city, that creates a conflict of interest with professionals. Crystal clear that it does not. With that, I will stay through this process if there are any additional questions.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move along now to Mr. Zubor with Finance.
Hold on, I have one more.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead. Yeah, that's right. You have two things.
Yeah, so the second one is 25-102. This is a specific agreement with Mr. Todd Davis. The amount is for his services not to exceed it, but the duration is $147,000. This amount was actually included in the previous topic we just talked about, over $310,175. So it's included in there. That's really it on that. And also, I just wanted to say that these two items, the first item we talked about, 21-101 passed 2 to 1 out of my committee, and the second one passed 3 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to comment on the second one with Mr. Davis? Looking to my right, looking to my left. Okay, then we're going to move on now. Thank you. Now, Mr. Zubor, Finance.
Thank you. I have no formal report this evening. We do have on passage for second reading, the donation to CRS that came out of the committee, 3 to 0, to pass it on emergency tonight. Our next meeting will be next Monday, the 2nd, at 6:00 PM in the chambers. I've had several different discussions with the Finance Director on several issues that will be discussed on Monday.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zubor? Saying none, we're going to move along now to Human Resources, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. There are several items on the agenda tonight for third readings out of the Utilities Board, which are 25, 86, 87, 88, and 89. We've had lots of time to talk about those and discussion on those. There's also an ordinance adopting a job description for the clerk of courts. That one we will do as a suspension of the rules as an emergency so that that position can be filled. We're still waiting on the bailiff position. And then Human Resources. We're waiting to see if we're going to have a meeting next month or not. I have talked to the Human Resources Director. She's going to be out of town for a little bit of time. And I don't know if there's anything else that the mayor wants to bring up at this point or not relative to Human Resources.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. No, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? For Mr. Mayor on this topic with HR? Okay, we're going to move along now to Mr. Cause with Public Safety and Health. Mr. Cause, did you want to start at your seat or do you want to go up to the desk up here?
No, I'm fine right here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The Public Safety and Health Committee met on May the 20th at 5:30 here in the council chambers. We have a couple of items on the agenda today that I'm going to be asking for suspension of the rules and passage on. One of them was not on the original agenda. This item did pass out of the committee last week with a 3 to 0 vote, and that is the Midship Drive, Morewood Avenue pedestrian improvement project. When we get to legislation, I'm going to be making a motion to add this piece of legislation, 25-111. And this will award a contract for this project to Param Electric, Inc., out of Wadsworth, Ohio. And this is in the amount of $42,122.75. This is to place the RRFB at that intersection, as noted, Walker Road, Morewood, and Midship. This has been a much-talked-about project. This is the result of the new development that went over there and the agreement that the city had with Pulte for them to cover half of the cost on this. So I regret that it didn't get placed on the agenda beforehand. Missed that, caught it over the weekend, and I'll be asking for the addition to that. But this is not a new item at all. We've talked about this quite a bit over the last few months, and the committee passed it 3 to 0. The reason for the suspension of the rule on that is, again, this is a project that's been going on for a very long time, and we want to get this up and going and get this RRFB installed as soon as we can. We're already out, I want to say a dozen weeks or so on this thing, so every week counts. We're going to miss this school year, but, you know, we hope to have this in place for the beginning of next school year in August. So September. So that's the hope, and that's the reason for the suspension of the rule. The other item that I have that came out of the committee, and it's on the agenda tonight, is... Where'd it go? Ordinance number 25-110, which will allow for the sale of beer and wine to be sold. Actually, it's just going to be beer. actually, it's just going to be beer, served and dispensed at a one-day summer fest to be held at Miller Road Park on 6/21/2025. This is a new, this is a new event that the Park and Recreation is putting together for their summer concert series. They're going to experiment with this one. This will be the first time that they've ever done this. It will be well-monitored by the police, it will be well-guarded as far as IDs, checking IDs, and having a restricted area at Miller Road Park where this can be served and consumed. But Park and Recreation is looking to bring in a different type of music. I think it's a polka band, they're going to do kind of an Oktoberfest-type of thing. And they wanted to kick off the summer concert series on June 21st and have beer sales at that event and see how it goes. So the need for the suspension of the rule is, obviously, we have to submit that form down to the Division of Labor Control to get it approved, to make this event happen in a couple of weeks. And again, that item passed out of committee 3 to 0. We had a couple of other items, probably the one item that is of most high interest to the community. We had a very lengthy discussion on e-bikes and bicycle safety. It's been a topic of conversation in the community, and up on the screen right now, we have the three different classes of e-bikes, Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3. And this was because members of the committee, of council, the administration, and even the Police Department and Park and Recreation, Mr. Fatch was there, we're all kind of learning about this at the same time, because this is somewhat of a new technology. These are, you know, these are kind of new to the communities, and a lot of communities, not just in our area and region, but across the state and also across the country are dealing with it and trying to figure out the safest way to have these e-bikes in their community and have them operated safely. So we had a lengthy discussion on this. Chief Robinson brought forward some great information, as did Mr. Fatch. I'll kind of hit some of the highlights on this. There are three different types of e-bikes. There's the Class 1, there's the Class 2, and then there's the Class 3. Now, the Class 1, the maximum speed on those, if I'm not mistaken, it goes, is that? Class 2 is 20. What is Class 1?
20.
Oh, yeah, Class 1, thank you, Amy. Class 1, 20 miles per hour. Class 2, 20 miles an hour as well, too. But there's some pedal assistance in there as well, too, that makes it somewhat different. And then there's the Class 3, and those are the ones that can go up to 28 miles per hour. So currently, the law's on the books through the State of Ohio, and this is actually through the Ohio Revised Code section 4511.522. That's the section that governs e-bikes. And the Class 3, which is the fastest of the three, the ones that go 28 miles per hour, you cannot be under the age of 16 and operate them. So those are for people 16 and older. Also, there is a helmet requirement for Class 3s. So if we just take it with, in communities, if we see somebody under the age of 16 going 28 miles per hour on the bike without a helmet, they should not be operating that. Class 3s at that speed require a helmet and require to be 16 or above. Eye protection as well. Yes, thank you. And additionally, so a couple of the other things as well that go with this. So these are legally to be operated on the city streets. They are to be, they are to follow the street rules, same as a bicycle is supposed to in theory as well, and they are supposed to observe the rules of the road. If they do not, you know, as same as other instances, you can call the Avon Lake Police Department, and they will address it. But the city parks as well, too, we discussed that. Right now, there is not a restriction on these e-bikes in the city parks. There is, though, on mopeds. So there's going to probably be some discussion over the next few weeks and months to whether or not we should try to marry those two things up. If there's a restriction on mopeds but not on some of the e-bikes, perhaps we should look at that a little bit. Cough preservation, even though that is under the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Metro Parks and not the City of Avon Lake, we did have a discussion on that, and we did receive some information from the Lorraine County Metro Parks on that. So Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes are permitted in the metro parks. Class 3 are not permitted in the Lorraine, not only in the cough preservation, but in any of the Lorraine County metro parks. So, and then folks can say, well, how do we know we're looking at a Class 1, or a Class 2, or a Class 3? They are actually marked, they're required by law to have a sticker on there that marks them Class 1, Class 2, Class 3. Obviously, if they're blowing by you, you can't see that. But they are required to be marked at the different classes. What we are doing as a city right now is we are in the education phase of this, and education is a big component of this. So the Avon Lake Police Department, with our digital media department, are putting together a number of PSAs on this that we are going to be putting out to the public very soon. I think they've already been filmed, they're in the editing stage, and we're going to get these out to the community for people to see the proper way that these are to be utilized in the community, the restrictions that are on them, the helmet requirements if it's a Class 3, et cetera. So those PSAs are going to be coming. Additionally, our school resource officers have been talking to the students while school is in session, both at Learwood and at the high school. I don't know about Troy, but I do know that the other two, that they have been actively engaged in talking with the residents or the students at both of those schools. So we are trying to educate right now, and I don't know if it's because of some of the conversation that's already happened in the community, but I have noticed that I do see a lot of younger people, when I see them riding, they are wearing helmets. And I think that's a really good thing, and I hope that that continues, that these things can be utilized in the community, they look like a lot of fun, they just have to be done safely. So we'll have more conversations on this as we are learning more about it and we learn what additional steps the city may or may not take with regards to these. So we just want to make sure that everyone's educated, summer is coming, we just, you know, we're past Memorial Day already, school's going to be letting out in a week or two, and we want to make sure that everyone utilizes these things in a very safe manner. The other item that we had discussed, there was an update on the southeast traffic study, and the mayor did a nice job bringing us up to speed, and I think that we've made a little bit more progress since that meeting. Mr. Mayor, would you mind providing council and the community that little bit more of that update of where we are?
Of course. Last week, there was three days of counting, and they did 15 intersections last week on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. This week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, there's an additional two streets that are being counted. And then in addition to that, this Saturday, there will be 15 more that are counted on Saturday only. And also today, which should be concluded, there were three streets back in the Hanford area and Liberty Rose area that were done today as well. So there's a little bit more to do, and it should be completed by the 7th. The 7th will actually be the last Saturday that'll be done, and then it'll be concluded. And then, post-data collection, they have approximately three months or so to put the data together and provide us a report.
And, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but each of those counts, I believe that we identified in the contract, are eight-hour counts.
That's correct. Typically, in traffic counts, you do the morning and evening rush hour, we're doing the entirety of a day, business day.
All right. Thank you, that's all I have.
Any further questions for Mr. Koz? Mr. Shamir?
Do I understand correctly, after the traffic count, I thought that there was going to be a presentation to council and residents with respect to the findings before they do the final report and assessment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, it's going to take some time for them to collate the data, and they also have to do the predictions of the modeling that they have. So that all going to be done, and there'll be a presentation. They'll wrap it up afterwards, but it'll be pretty well wrapped up as far as the data collection and interpretation. They'll present that to council.
Mr. Shamir, anybody else? Want to finish up? Mr. Shamir?
Because the discussion was to do a assumption list prior to completing the simulation, and especially since we've got splits and data collection, I think that assumption list would be, I think, vital for residents to understand what exactly they're going to be looking at and if they've got any concerns or questions. And that was before the simulation to be ran, based on initial discussions we had in the... Mr. Koz?
Mr. Koz?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Shamir is correct. We did say that we were going to have an additional discussion on that before they start to crunch all of those numbers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll discuss, I guess I was confused on what an assumption list means.
Okay. So I'm going to ask for Mr. Mayor and Mr. Koz to get together offline here and clear this out.
Yeah, if I get to finish. When the data's all collected, we'll make a determination on a time, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to talk with you, and we'll talk with them and figure out the best way, if that's at a committee meeting, or an administrative meeting, or whatever that may be, to go over that. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Shamir, for bringing that up.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else on this topic? Okay, then we're going to move along then. The next one is the Public Service Committee, which I chair, and the next meeting's going to be on Wednesday, June 4th at 5:30 PM. And tonight, we have five items. And I want to go through the five items because we're going to be asking for suspension of the rule, emergency passage, and you're going to understand why. The first one has to do with something that we decided back, we voted on back in 2024, and it has to do with amending ordinance number 24-81. It has to do with the bridge out here on Electric Boulevard, and as the design team, the engineers were there, they saw that there was additional work that needed to be done. And so the agreement that we're looking at tonight will authorize in section number 1 to amend the amount by an additional $18,900 to provide for the relocation of the waterline for a revised total of $238,700. And what's important to note is that this is part of the Avon Lake Regional Water Project also, and the suspenses will be covered, I believe, by them. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, I didn't notice on the last conversation.
Okay. Maybe, I should go with...
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Liskovic. Okay, yes, okay. This should be covered by Avon Lake Regional Water.
Yes.
Are there any questions on this particular one? Because that's the reason why we have to go forward. This project is getting ready to take off and launch. We're up against a deadline. Okay, then we'll move on to the next, we'll move on to the next one. And that is ordinance number 25-15 as before us, and it has to do with the purchase of a snowplow and ice package. And we've been talking the last month about additional equipment and how far out there those lists are before we can even receive the equipment. And this would be through, again, National Purchasing Partners, which is NPP.gov. We'd be purchasing the product through, actually Henderson Products in Bucyvis, Ohio. And this is a package, a truck snowplow ice package, just like we did before, we need another one at $126,588. We need to get on that list. If we don't get on the list, it might not even happen this year. We have another vehicle that has, that's broken down. Any questions about that? Okay, we're going to move on to the next one. The next three are actually very similar. They have to do with submerged land leases. And as all of you know, anyone that lives along the shoreline, if they're going to be doing any work out in the water, they have to come to the City of Avon Lake, and they have to ask us if we have any future plans for construction, building of piers, docks, wharves, bulkheads, connecting ways, any terminal facilities, any improvements that the city might be planning on doing in the future. So the first one is 32106 Lake Road, and that is the first one. The reason that we're moving forward is an emergency to necessitate the property owner to begin the approval process so they can secure materials to begin the erosion control on that project. Any questions on that one? Okay, seeing none. The next one is 32114 Lake Road, and it's the same situation, it's an submerged land lease. Again, it's so that they can move forward to secure materials so there aren't issues with erosion. Any questions? Okay, the last one then is 32118 Lake Road. And again, in checking with the administration, the city doesn't have any plans on any of these three properties down the road. And again, it's an emergency passage so that they can move forward to prevent erosion in that area. Any questions on any of those? Seeing none, then we're going to move on to the Planning Commission with Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Planning Commission meets on June 3rd, a week from today. I do not have the agenda, so I don't know what is on the agenda at this point in time. And then we do have one item that's going to be on, and we're going to go through three readings on it, and that's the text changes that the administration has recommended, and that's in ordinance number 25-109. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions about the text changes to Mr. Smith? Planning and zoning code? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on then to the zoning board, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Tomorrow is the next zoning board of appeals meeting at 7 o'clock here in chambers.
Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Okay, we're going to move on now to Mr. Shamir with Parks and Rec Commission.
Nothing to report.
No updates? Okay, any special committees? The only one I'm going to be mentioning is the Tree Commission. I was surprised and happy to receive a proclamation from the Ohio Senate. This is from Senator Robert McCauley. He's the president of the Ohio Senate and Senator Nathan Manning, the 13th Senatorial District, and it's honoring the City of Avon Lake for the superb achievement, again, of Tree City USA, and is for the 32nd year, along with the 3rd year for the Growth Award. And this will be going to the Tree Commission. So it's a wonderful proclamation, thank you. Any other special committees? Oh, and the Tree Commission will be meeting on the 11th at 6:00 PM at the Old Firehouse. Okay, then at that point in time, we're going to open it up to audience participation. And remember, this point in time is for anything that's on tonight's agenda, and you have three minutes if anybody wants to come forward on any items on tonight's agenda. Come on up and give us your name and the city that you reside in.
Gerald Phillips, concerned citizen. I agree with Mr. Shamir in the points he's made up about the First Amendment to the reimbursement agreement. It should not, 25101, 25102 should not be subject to suspension. To ask, answer Mr. Smith's question about suspension, if you look at Exhibit A, it talks about a budget for the first six months. We have 34 days till end of June, and we're going to spend $310,000. All those services are going to be performed. We're going to have to amend this in a very short time, so there's no emergency to have this passed. You know, we railroad Burns Ockner through without a committee, without a CCM. This should go through readings. Maybe the urgency is because on April 16th, or the effective date, AL ERG has already signed it. Maybe the emergency is because they signed it already. Let's talk about the agreement, some of the provisions. No arbitration agreement provision to resolve differences, no good-faith obligation on behalf of AL ERG to negotiate in good faith, no requirement that their objection must be not unreasonably made, or that their approvals can't be unreasonably withheld, as Mr. Smith pointed out. Those are some of them. But let's talk about the main thing, the once-in-a-lifetime deal that Mr. Davis and Burns Ockner has negotiated. They negotiated the best deal for the City of Avon Lake, including the school district. The city's going to buy the property and not have to pay $30 million, but we're going to take it from the school district. So the school district is going to lose $30 million through the tip. Okay? $30 million? $30 million negative to the school district on their proposal. Here's a better proposal. We have the key. We rezoned it, 121905, that says the rezoning requires a minimum of 20 acres. We don't pay for the 20 acres. The school doesn't lose $30 million, and we get the park at zero cost. Tell me what deal is best? Tell me what deal is best? Paying nothing for the parkland, or the school paying $30 million for the parkland? Tell me what's the best deal? Now, I may be stupid. I may be ignorant. Me not like what I say, but you know what? Common sense says this is a bad deal. And who negotiated it? Him, who lied to you about the appraisal, okay? And, all right, you know, breached his duty on the demolition. He should have had you draft a demolition ordinance.
Anybody else want to come forward on any topic on tonight's agenda?
Before I begin, I'd like to understand what Mr. Koss is going to add to the legislation. He said he was going to add something to be voted on later tonight.
Right. May I answer you now or after you?
Sure, sure. I didn't know if you were ready.
Okay, yeah, we're not going to start your time.
Thank you, because I'm trying to understand.
No, that's, I understand. So he spoke to you about the RRFBs, correct? So this is ordinance number 25-111, an ordinance awarding a contract for the installation of rapid rectangular flashing beacons. It's at Walker Road, Morewood Avenue, Midship Drive. And you've been involved in those discussions.
I have, because I live near there.
Right, exactly. And because it was under the amount that has to come to console, some of us thought it didn't need to have an ordinance. But there's an MOU between us and Pulte that says that they will pay up to $25,050, 50%. Since this is $50,000 is less, now they'll be paying less. But because of that, we want to memorialize it. So that's why it was added.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, because it's up the street for me and everything else. That's great.
Clear? Okay, great. You're welcome, sir.
William Zimmerman. So guys are talking about 25011 and 2502, 102. I don't think that these should go three readings. I believe they should be tabled for a period of time so that it could be better information exchanged, and people will be able to understand it better. I don't trust this man. I don't believe he has the city's best interest at heart. I don't believe he ever has. He sits on the Brownfield Committee. Never took a minute. Never took time to tell people when those meetings were. Never advised anyone of what was going on with the Brownfield Committee. That's enough right there for me to call him a crook. And I believe that's the case. If you look it up in the dictionary, it means somebody dishonest. He's dishonest. And from my standpoint, that's why we shouldn't be moving forward with any type of agreements to go along with him or those other three companies that he has working with him. I don't believe for a second that they haven't done other projects together in the past. I haven't had the opportunity to find all that information yet. Still looking. Hope to have it here in the near future. But my point again would be, I don't trust him. Now, he's received $294,000 in payments from the city of Avon Lake, according to Mr. Phillips. Yet his first agreement was for a total of $265,000. How did we go over? $30,000. That's not chump change. So why would we have gone over the payment? I, I can't understand that. Does nobody check this stuff? Are we just going through like we do with so many other things? Sign things blindly, vote blindly, don't care? Nobody does homework, except Mr. Shamir. I don't understand that. And as far as the beacon thing, I don't think it's a rush. He can claim that it's been taking so long, it was donated by somebody else. I don't know how we got it all of a sudden. There hasn't ever been an accident or problem at Morewood going across. Are they delayed? Sure. Is it slow-moving sometimes? Yes, I've been there for all of that. All the accidents that have happened with pedestrians and bicycles and vehicles have happened in other places in the city, not here.
Think anybody else want to come forward on any topic tonight on our agenda? You're welcome to come forward. Okay, then that means we're going to move on then with our motions. The very first motion is by Mr. Shamir.
I move to appoint Mr. Eric Krieg to the Environmental Affairs Advisory Board for a term commencing May 28th, 2025, and expiring December 31st, 2025. This is a, one of three resident board members that have been selected.
And under your discussions, okay. Any further discussion by anyone? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shamir, we have another one that's before us.
I move to appoint Mr. Martin Matuzak to the Environmental Affairs Advisory Board for a term commencing May 28th, 2025, and expiring December 31st, 2025.
And in discussion?
This is, this is the second seat that is, that is a resident member seat that is available to be filled.
Any further discussion by members of council? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shamir, the next one?
Yes, I move to appoint Mr. Jonathan Portraziba to the Environmental Affairs Advisory Board for a term commencing May 28th, 2025, and expiring December 31st, 2025.
And in further discussion?
This is the final seat that is a resident member seat that's being filled.
Thank you. Any further discussion by anyone? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we're on to legislation. This will be the third reading. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
Madam Chair, point of order.
I'm sorry?
I have to add a piece of legislation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, very good. Thank you. I have echoing chamber in here. We're going to ask if someone has to add or to delete any legislation. Mr. Koss.
Thank you. I move to add ordinance number 25-111.
In discussion?
Yes, in discussion. As I mentioned during the committee reports, this will be to award a contract for the installation of the RRFB at Walker Road, Morewood Avenue, and Midship Drive. This will be going to Param Electric in the amount of $42,122.75.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, this is the motion to add.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we will go on to legislation, the third readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, ordinance number 25-86.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of professional engineer in Avon Lake Regional Water and establishing the qualifications and duties for said position.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I move for passage of ordinance 25-86.
And in discussion?
Yes, this is an ordinance adopting a job description for the position of professional engineer.
Any further discussion by anyone? Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, ordinance number 25-87.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of senior professional engineer in Avon Lake Regional Water and establishing the qualifications and duties for said position.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I move for passage of ordinance number 25-87.
In discussion?
This is for the water, the Avon Lake Regional Water as well, for the position of senior professional engineer.
Any further discussion by anyone? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, 25-88.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of business development director in Avon Lake Regional Water and establishing the qualifications and duties for said position.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move for passage of ordinance number 25-88.
In discussion?
Thank you. This is the third ordinance of this sort this evening. It's a job description for the position of business development director in the Avon Lake Regional Water.
Any further discussion by anyone? Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, ordinance number 25-89.
An ordinance fixing compensation ranges for Avon Lake Regional Water, non-bargaining positions, repeal in ordinance number 23-193, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
I move for passage of ordinance number 25-89 as an emergency.
In discussion only?
Yes, this is the setting of the ranges for the compensation ranges for the non-bargaining positions at the utilities department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. We're now down to second readings. Ordinance number 25-98. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a personal services agreement with Simve Systems LLC for enterprise cyber risk management services and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Shamir?
This is the second of three readings, so we will be looking to pass it on third reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Shamir?
Nope.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Shamir? Any further discussion, anyone? Okay, then we will move on then to the next one. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, ordinance number 25-99.
An ordinance authorizing a donation to community resource services and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance number 25-99.
In discussion?
This is a donation to community resource services. We did have the director come in and give us a presentation. We have made a donation to CRS since 2018, started at $18,000 in 2020. It was $20,000. And then since 2021, we have donated $25,000.
Thank you. Any further discussion by anyone? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. Now we're down to first readings. Ordinance number 25-101. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the Professional Services reimbursement agreement with Avon Lake Environmental Redevelopment Group LLC for the power plant redevelopment project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Arnold?
I move for suspension of the rules requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
No.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
It has passed. Mr. Arnold?
I move, I move for passage of ordinance number 25-101.
In discussion?
Yes, this is the reimbursement agreement that we talked about earlier tonight. The amount is not to exceed $310,175. This is retroactive to January 1st, 2025. There's also a, a budget amount that allocates which professionals will be, what their fees are for each professional, the three professionals that we're using. That's it. Thank you.
Any further discussion by anyone? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, with regard to this, I voted yes on the suspension. I really want to see us start putting together a strategy to what we're going to do with this property. It's, it's a big-time investment by the city. It's a big-time, important to the city, and it needs to be done, and it needs to be done as best as we can. And I just, I just hope that we'll see something move on this very, very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Shamir? Thank you, anyone else, Mr. Shamir?
I voted no, because I don't think this is an emergency. I think you could take it down three readings, be clear, be transparent, and at the end of the day, the future of this project does not depend on two more readings. If this project is solid, if it's been negotiated properly, to have the discussions, to be transparent about how it's been negotiated, is not something that should be jeopardized, thank you.
Any further discussions? Mr. Zuber.
With all due respect to Mr. Shamir, I think councils made that decision by six of us voting to suspend the rule. When we first started this many, many years ago, the biggest thing that the people in Avon Lake wanted out of this property was a park. Six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars an acre for land on the lakefront for a park? Where can you buy an acre of land in, for six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in Avon Lake, period? Much less on the lakefront? I mean, we're talking lakefront property, I don't think you can find anything for about that price, maybe even in Avon Lake. Uh, a couple other things here. Anybody can litigate about anything, okay? We can have litigation about anything, and to say that we're gonna have litigation about something in the agreement, probably will, we may will. I think it'll be resolved by the time that we get to the point where we have to make a decision. This moves the process forward, if there's anything that we've all wanted to happen in this particular project, is to move forward. We've been sitting on this thing, looking at this for a long time. I think this was part of the interim agreement on, on the reimbursement aspect of it, and, um, you know, I mean, ARG has not been the greatest group to work with, I've always found them, when I have contacted them, to be quite willing to, um, um, come forward and work with us on different things, and I think the fact that, uh, council is moving forward on this shows that they wanna move forward on this, on a suspension of the rule. This is now the third meeting we've had to discuss this, along with an executive session, we've discussed this. So I think that, um, the biggest problem that we have is that we have a lot of discussion on something that makes sense on which we have to do.
Any further discussion by any members of council? Uh, Mr. Shamir.
Well, you know, the price of six hundred and seventy-odd thousand dollars per acre, the only comparable price of lakefront was purchased by Avon Lake Regional Water, and I agree with you. But I want to note, Mr. Zuber, that is for a clean site. That is for a site that doesn't require remediation or any further work. So let's be clear, six hundred and seventy thousand is an analog for a clean site, not a site with all sorts of potential environmental and the potential of having regrading funds of fifteen million dollars that would be maybe called remediation funds, thank you.
Anybody else have any further discussion?
Just to comment on that, I don't think anybody along this table is gonna agree to purchase any property at that site that has not been remediated. I, I think that for any of us to think that is unbelievable, I think that we all have made the decision that we want a clean piece of property, we want a beautiful lakefront park, this also creates another fifteen million dollars to improve the park. You have a park, and then you have fifteen million more dollars to do improvements in the park, whether it's grading, whether it's slides, whether it's sand broadened, all kinds of different things that you can do there, and I think that together between the city of Avon Lake and the Metro Park and a couple, hopefully a couple other entities, we'll be able to move forward and make this a great project for us all.
Thank you, any further questions, discussion? Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
No.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. We're now down to ordinance number twenty-five dash one zero two. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing funds for continued legal services to Todd Davis Esquire, and, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Arnold.
I'm, uh, I move for suspension of the rules requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Arnold.
I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five dash one oh two.
In discussion.
Yes, this is, um, the continued services, uh, of Todd Davis, not to exceed a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, that hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars was, uh, included in the previous ordinance that we just passed of the three hundred and some dot thousand. Um, Todd's been great to work with over the last two or three years, and we welcome his continued services.
Thank you, sir, any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Cos.
Yeah, thank you, um, Madam President. Um, I simply just want to say, thank you, Todd Davis, for the work that you've done on behalf of the city. Wanted to put that out, that you are appreciated, your work is appreciated. Um, we had a lot of really good questions that were brought up last week by Mr. Shamir. You were able to answer a lot of those things for me, to get me to a decision today on the previous piece of legislation, and that's just one example of a way that you've been able to, um, communicate with the city when needed. Uh, you've come to meetings when we needed you, you come to executive sessions, you provide, provided information and background when asked, so, um, thank you very much, Todd, thank you.
Thank you, and I, what I would like to follow up with is that AL ERG did not give us your name. Um, you came to us as our consultant, and you have represented us, and you have, you're the best of the best. You wrote the standards for the state of Ohio with Brownfields, and we have you as our consultant, and you've answered our questions patiently, very patiently, and detailed, and, um, I'm looking forward to continually working with you, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I want to echo those comments as well, I've had a lot of contact with, uh, Mr. Davis, a lot of conversations, and he's been nothing but professional, he's definitely a vigorous advocate for us, he fights very hard for us. I think he's been unfairly characterized, and quite frankly, defamed by some people, uh, in this room, and I think it's, uh, absurd that that continues, uh, but he's been nothing but a professional, and as I indicated, uh, he works a hundred percent for us, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Zuber.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanna echo some of the things that the other members around the table have said, and I think that probably was one of the best things that we did by recommendation of citizens, was to hire Mr. Davis for this project. Uh, I think that he has proven over and over time, and time again, how good he is at, uh, dealing with this particular issue, and his background certainly, uh, is amazing in my belief.
Agree, thank you. Yes, Mr. Shamir.
Well, I would echo the same, I think Mr. Davis is a well-renowned professional, I've told him this, and I've told him before, that if I was in this business, that's the person that I would hire. But, I'm going to say something. CIC are the residents who actually introduce Mr. Davis, so let's be clear. Let's not make comments about residents. CIC brought Mr. Davis, and that was a good decision, but it was CIC, thank you.
Right, and one of the reasons why we have CIC is because of the profession that they're in, that they are specialists in their field, and they're able to bring us their experience. Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Okay. Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. We're gonna move on now to ordinance number twenty-five dash one zero three. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of clerk of court in the, in the Avon Lake Municipal Court, and establishing the qualifications and duties for said position.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, uh, at this time, I would like to move that, uh, suspension, to, uh, suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, at this time, I'd move for passage of, uh, ordinance twenty-five dash one oh three.
In discussion.
Yeah, this is for the, the establishment of the position of clerk of court in the Avon Lake Municipal Court at the judge's bequest.
Thank you, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Um, ordinance number twenty-five dash one oh four, Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amended ordinance number twenty-four dash eighty-one for a professional services agreement with American Structure Point Incorporated, and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule requiring the three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Uh, I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five dash one zero four. In discussion, um, this is a amendment of last year's ordinance number twenty-four dash eight-one, and the change is, is in section number one, is hereby amended in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars to provide for the relocation of the water line for a revised total of two hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven dollars. And this will be delivered then to American Structure Point Inc. of Cleveland. Um, the ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessitating the construction observation and contract administration in the reconstruction of the predetermined concrete streets identified in two thousand twenty-four Concrete Street Program, including the bridge, thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Um, ordinance number twenty-five dash one oh four, uh, one oh five, Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a snowplow and ice package for the Public Works Department, and declaring an emergency.
I move suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh. Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Um, I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five dash one zero five. As has been said, it doesn't look like it now, but we do need to have a snowplow and ice package for this coming winter. Um, the Public Works Director and the Public Service Committee determined that a contract between the League of Oregon Cities and Henderson Products Inc. of Bucyrus, Ohio, known as Henderson Products, uh, made available to members of the National Purchasing Partners LLC, known as NPP Gov, represents the best option for the city to purchase the vehicle and equipment as is required for an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And the reason for the emergency measure is so that the Public Works Department can order the equipment and get in line for the production of it, so we can have it in time for the winter season. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read the title of resolution number twenty-five dash one zero six.
A resolution approving the use of submerged lands, and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings, Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. I move for passage of resolution number twenty-five dash one zero six. A resident at three-two-one-zero-six Lake Road in the city of Avon Lake has requested permission to construct the proposed shore structure in Avon Lake. Um, the city has determined that there is no need for construction by the city to maintain an operation of breakwaters, piers, docks, wharves, bulkheads, connecting waves, ways, water terminal facilities, improvements, or any other needs. And the reason for the emergency, um, is declared so that the property owner can begin approval process to immediately secure the materials to begin the erosion control project to protect the Lake Erie shoreline. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Um, Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, resolution number twenty-five dash one zero seven.
A resolution approving the use of submerged lands, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh. Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. I move for passage of resolution number twenty-five dash one zero seven. Like we have in the past, this has to do with submerged lands, and the property at three-two-one-one-four Lake Road, um, the property owner would like to, um, put in some bulkheads and preserve the shoreline from erosion, and the city has determined that there's no need for us in the future to do any improvements, and the emergency, again, is to, um, declare an emergency measure, the emergency being the necessity of the property owner to begin the approval process and to immediately secure materials to begin the erosion control project to protect the Lake Erie shoreline. Any further discussion? Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. And the last one, um, Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, resolution number twenty-five dash one zero eight.
A resolution approving the use of submerged lands at thirty-two-one-one-eight Lake Road, Avon Lake, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh. Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. I move for passage of resolution number twenty-five dash one zero eight. Again, this is a submerged land lease that's being requested by resident at three-two-one-one-eight Lake Road. The city of Avon Lake has determined that there's no future needs in this area for submerged lands, and this is an emergency, the emergency measure, uh, being the necessity of the property owner to begin the approval process, to immediately secure materials to begin the erosion control, uh, project to protect the Lake Erie shoreline. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Um, Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, ordinance number twenty-five dash one zero nine.
An ordinance amended planning and zoning code sections twelve fourteen, twelve twenty-four, twelve twenty-six, twelve thirty-four, and twelve thirty-six.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, this is the fir- first reading of, uh, ordinance twenty-five dash one oh nine. The changes are text changes that were recommended to planning commission by the, uh, by this, by, uh, staff, and, uh, they're all included in the ordinance, and my copy actually has the changes in red, so, uh, hopefully everyone can see those, and if they have any questions, feel free to contact me or contact, uh, Kelly, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion by our colleagues? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, ordinance number twenty-five dash one one zero.
An ordinance allowing beer and wine to be sold, served, dispensed, and consumed for one day at Summerfest, to be held at Miller Road Park on June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Cos.
I move to suspend the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cos?
I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five dash one one zero.
In discussion?
Yes, as in my discussion during my committee report, this is a new event that the city of Avon Lake is putting together, Summerfest to kick off the summer concert series. And at this first event, they are going to have a, one or two beer vendors that are going to be there. This is not going to be on the scale of the, of the Beer Fest. This is going to be a much smaller event, and it's going to be, it's going to be controlled. There's going to be police on site. There's going to be members of the park and rec checking IDs and making sure that these areas are separated, roped off from the rest of the park. It sounds like a lot of planning is going into this event. They want to kickstart the summer concert series, and they wanted to start with something new, which is the Summerfest, and it requires council passing the ordinance permitting the one-day beer and wine sales at the park.
Thank you. Any further discussion by colleagues?
Oh, I would just, I would, yeah, I would just, I would just say that there's going to be a lot of information that the city of Avon Lake or our social media is going to be putting out, advertising this event. So you'll be hearing a lot more about it in the coming days and weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion by our colleagues? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Now we're going to go to the added ordinance, and that's number twenty-five dash one-one-one. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance awarding a contract for the installation of rapid rectangular flashing beacons, RRFBs, at Walker Road, Morewood Avenue, and Midship Drive, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Cos?
I move to suspend the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. Mr. Cos?
Thank you. I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five dash one-one-one.
In discussion?
Yes, in discussion. Again, this is a much talked about item that we've, we've had discussions all the way from when those developments were going in there at Midship Drive across from Morewood Avenue and Walker Road. This is a part of the agreement with Pulte that they would pay fifty percent of this improvement cost. I know that there have been a number of residents that have reached out about this project. They've asked, reached out to me quite a bit, asking what is the delay on this? What is the delay on this? When is this going to happen? And in turn, I've, I've harassed Mr. Liskovic here and the mayor with the same questions of when is this going to happen? When is this going to happen? So I appreciate everyone's patience on this, and we are finally moving forward on it. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Liskovic to talk a little bit more about the timing of this.
Sure, Mr. Liskovic, please.
Sure. As was stated, overall, it's, it's a fairly simple project, but the biggest hurdle is lead times for all the components that go into the RRFB. Throughout the whole process, talking to different vendors, we've heard from, you know, anywhere as short as ten to twelve weeks to potentially six months, depending on brand and style, that are selected for submission to us. So I think that is really kind of highlights the necessity to move this along, just to get in, in the queue to order everything as we're still dealing with tremendous lead times and a lot of different things in construction.
I have a question for you. So we've talked about equipment. What about a service? Are we, is it hard to get somebody out there to actually install these? Get on their schedule?
Scheduling is, is a bit challenging. You know, we, we solicited proposals from four vendors. One of them was responsive to it, having the capacity and the various subcontractors to be able to do the work. So that is another factor to think about.
Thank you. Any further discussion by anyone? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Okay, we're at the point in time where we have public input on any topic. You're welcome to come forward and state your name, the city that you're from, and you have five minutes. Greetings.
My name is W. U. City of Avon Lake, and my public comments are regarding the connecting road from Portside subdivision to Hanford Boulevard, and requesting an update on the installation of the gate on the connecting roadway. In particular, there has been no update or report on the installation of the gate that, or that roadway that connects Portside subdivision to Hanford Boulevard, and also no update regarding the, whether or not Pulte Homes of Ohio has paid to the city the fifteen thousand dollars that it had agreed to under the MOU. By way of background, on October fifteenth of twenty-twenty-four, this city council adopted ordinance number twenty-four dash one fifty-eight. And this ordinance instructed and authorized the city to enter into an MOU with Pulte Homes of Ohio. And in particular, section three of the MOU, the memorandum of agreement, states as follows. "The city shall be responsible for the installation of the gate within thirty days of the completion of the connecting roadway and all costs pertaining to the repairs and replacement thereof." Notwithstanding the previous sentence, Pulte agrees that it shall, it shall contribute fifteen thousand dollars towards the cost of the gate. I, after my comments, I'll be passing out just a package for city council with the particular ordinance, the MOU, as well as three photographs that, that I took of the, of the connection between Pulte, the Portside subdivision by Pulte Homes and Hanford Boulevard. And you'll see on those dated photographs that the completion of the connecting roadway has been completed since April fifteenth of twenty-twenty-five. Over thirty days have passed, and there's still no gate installed. In fact, there's been no update and no indication of whether Pulte Homes has in fact paid that fifteen thousand dollars, whether the city has obtained designs, costs, or any sort of, come up with any sort of timeline. And therefore, I'm requesting that the city immediately comply with the MOU and install the gate referenced in the MOU and ordinance twenty-four dash one fifty-eight. Also, if the city has not yet received the fifteen thousand dollars from Pulte Homes of Ohio, I'm requesting that the city immediately do so. I've, that's the conclusion of my comments, and I will be passing out these, these photographs in the exhibit for council.
Thank you.
I've marked the exhibit as, with the exhibit sticker that says Avon Lake Council Meeting, May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, just for easy reference. Thank you.
You want to give them to Mrs. Rossmarin? She can distribute them for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks. We have a response from Mr. Mayor. He just informed me. Would you come on up? Thank you.
So we met on Friday regarding exactly what you're talking about. We met with the police department, fire department, Public Works, community development, and our engineer department. So we are coming up with a plan to remove the concrete jersey barriers and put in, I don't know if we would call it a gate, but a gate's function is to limit access to certain people and prevent access to others. So our goal is to prevent public access through that, but allow public safety access through that. So the most efficient way we've come up with doing that is removing the jersey barriers. We're going to put up, I'm not sure we call it a gate. It's going to be more like a chain and signage that will prevent the public from going through there, but will allow our public safety to go through there. As you know, there's been a lot of development occurring back in there, and our concern has always been that we want to be able to get our public safety vehicles back in there as quickly as possible if something happens. So that is the plan. The Public Works Department will be working with the Engineering Department for signage. In fact, a signage plan, I think, is currently being developed for that area, and we're looking into the materials needed to make that happen.
Will there be an opportunity for public input into the, the chain or the gate, simply because if, if it's a chain, just want to make sure that wasn't something that perhaps an individual could just unhook or maybe drive over? We have noticed that vehicles from the Portside subdivision have driven up to that barrier and then backed up.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so, and we've also noticed a number of bicyclists. We didn't want that chain to also be any sort of danger to those people.
We, we've talked about the bicyclists as well. We have to come up with a plan because no sidewalks are in place yet, so we have to figure that one out. The, the chain has to be able to be accessed through our public safety vehicles quickly. Does that mean a car could crash through there? Possibly, but highly unlikely somebody's going to risk damaging their car to go through that. If it happens, obviously, we would, we would deal with that. But we will have appropriate signage according to the Uniform Traffic Code as well.
And then, may I ask what the timeline would be and whether or not there may be an opportunity for public input?
It's not really a public input function. It's more just to make sure we secure that per the agreement. We don't want the public going through that. I would have to defer to Mr. Liskovic on a timetable, and I'm not sure we even had a chance to figure out how long a lead time would be for any orders, but I'd, I'd refer to him and see if he's got any updated information.
And has, has Pulte complied with their portion, given the money to Avon Lake?
Once we get a cost, then we would seek reimbursement.
Mr. Liskovic?
Sure. So as the mayor mentioned, we met Friday on it. Currently, right now, our engineer is putting together the necessary signage planning for, for that. As soon as we have all that information, then we'll commence ordering of, ordering or creation of the necessary components to go in with that project. As far as timing, I think once we have a plan, it shouldn't be, you know, it should be relatively quick to get everything pulled together and, and put in. So really, we're just kind of waiting on that plan for signage, and as soon as we have that, we'll be able to provide an update.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I can provide you a direct update once we have some more information, if you'd like.
I appreciate it.
And he has your contact information correct?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up on any topic? Do you want to talk about? Five minutes?
Gerald Phillips, concerned Avon Lake resident. An attorney, forty-seven years, practicing in the area of taxation, zoning, real estate development, TIF, CPA for forty-eight years, familiar with municipal accounting. To the residents of Avon Lake, I want to offer you two deals. Deal number one, negotiated by Todd Davis and Burns Ockner. City buys land for fifteen million for a park from them, makes fifteen million in improvements, gets reimbursed by the TIF of thirty million. So it doesn't cost the city anything, but the city, school district lose thirty million dollars. Deal number one. Deal number two, the city enforces their zoning laws, enacts twelve nineteen, including twelve nineteen oh five, requires that the developer pursuant to that section provide twenty million dollars for parkland to get the zoning for all forty acres. City pays nothing. School district lose nothing. Tell me which deal you would like. The second deal is a deal that has been advocated by Mr. Shamir and myself, based on my expertise. So you, the Avon Lake residents and citizens, you make the decision which deal you think is better, deal number one or deal number two for the, for the city of Avon Lake. I had the fortunate opportunity to go to two Memorial Day services. I even bought a poppy, okay? And I listened to people talk about protecting, adhering to our constitution, the rule of law, carrying out officers and officials, they're performing their duties and oath of office. And I heard a comment that democracy and our freedom is just one generation away from extinction. And that caused me to reflect on the city of Avon Lake, where I've been a resident for twenty years, and for forty-some years practicing a law advocating freedom of speech, right of petition, and it caused me great concern living in the city of Avon Lake, because I believe there's a systematic problem in the city of Avon Lake concerning freedom of speech, freedom to petition your government for regress, and the failure of public officials to carry out their oath of office. You know, one generation away from extinction. And a prime example of this systematic problem is when you have a councilperson who doesn't get records, doesn't get information, is kept in the dark, okay, and is chastised by the public sometimes for asking questions. That's a systematic problem, okay? Systematic problem. And it shouldn't exist in the city of Avon Lake. You guys all took a note of office. You raised your right hand, said aye by to, to fulfill the United States Constitution, the Ohio Constitution, the city charter, and codified ordinances. And a number of you have violated that. You don't comply with the charter. You don't comply with the codified ordinances. It's pretty obvious that when I get up here and speak, I can tell by your nonverbal. You disdain the fact that I come up here and speak. You don't, you can't wait till my five minutes is over. That's the systematic problem we have in this city. It's a problem, okay? You don't want us to come up here and speak. You can't wait for us to get done. Mr. Zuber can't wait. He keeps time all the time, and he has a watch to make sure we don't go over. And when somebody comes up here and asks for additional time, there's certain people will never vote for that additional time. That's the systematic problem we have. We have a systematic problem. See this comprehensive land use plan? You spent a quarter million dollars, okay? How many of you voted, okay, against your oath of office against this? This was adopted by the codified ordinances, okay? I can name you out. You know who you are. You know who you are. Okay, quarter million dollars, and we worry about spending little dollars here and there, okay? You know what? You should take this, throw it away, okay? Because you don't fulfill your oath of office. I'm glad to be an American.
Anybody else want to come up? Any topic?
I'd like to play a video before I begin. May I have permission?
No. You know that the answer's no. Every week you ask me, it has to.
No, I don't ask every week.
You do ask me.
I ask, go back and read, watch the tapes. You'll see it's not every week.
Mr. Zimmerman.
I purposely do that.
I know you do.
But I don't do it every week.
But you enjoy it.
I do, because you're violating my civil rights. William Zimmerman. So let's talk about civil rights. As the mayor just sat there and whined because somebody defamed Mr. Todd Davis. It's my right. I have the right to say what I like, even if you don't like it. Freedom of speech. Where our constitution starts with. Mr. Zuber uses freedom of speech while the meeting goes on. Him and Mr. Smith chat away. Nobody says nothing. Nobody cares. But those of us who sit out here, we can see it. Nobody does nothing. Get my civil rights violated repeatedly here. At the economic development meeting, our madam chair started screaming and yelling because I was speaking out in the audience, smashing her gavel, even though it wasn't her meeting to run. Mr. Arnold's meeting, he was the chair. You were out of order, violating my civil rights. Just like all the times that I've come up here and made comments that you guys didn't like. Them letting Mr. Davis get up and rebut to it, which was against Robert's rules and a violation of my civil rights. How many times did you do that? I'm sure more than I've asked to play a video. Set the record straight. The CIC was the people who asked to engage with Mr. Todd Davis. It would have been Steve Luca. It's in the minutes of the CIC, but there's no minutes for the Brownfield Committee, which Mr. Davis sits on. It's why we're in court with y'all, because you don't believe in the rule of law. Don't have the ability to follow it. Just like the first time I made a public records request here, the law director chose to wait thirty days to fulfill it. Ohio Revise Co. says that records should be easily available, quickly responded to, done within three to five business days. Thirty days he chose to wait. Violation of my civil rights again. There's a pattern, as Mr. Phillips says. There's a pattern here. And we're all surprised to see the officer all of a sudden showed up. But there's a pattern here, as he states. It's ongoing. Mrs. Gentry sits here and does other stuff while we talk. That's fine. I don't care. She must have something more pressing. Why they gamble at this end? It's remarkable. You guys are supposed to be pillars of the society in which we live. The citizens, you expect us to respect you and to acknowledge that. Why would we want to? You don't believe half the things that are in the constitution. You don't abide by your oath of office. It's been an ongoing theme. I've asked for his resignation at least a dozen times because of the stuff from the CIC Committee and the Brownfield Committee. He shouldn't hold his position anymore. Just like Mr. Davis shouldn't be representing the city, because I believe there's been a backyard, back room, back whatever, deal made already in the Brownfield Committee. I can't wait till we go to court against you. Guys, keep dragging your feet. Someday, justice will be held.
Anybody else have anything further to say? Because anybody who likes to read our charter in our ordinances, two-two-oh-point-oh-four authorizes the council president to oversee all activities of city council. So yes, Mr. Zimmerman, it was Mr. Arnold's meeting, but you were not allowing him to proceed, therefore I did hit the gavel.
I don't like that.
And you were not stopping, so therefore I stood up to make sure that this short little person, me, could be seen and heard. Any miscellaneous business from anybody? On any topic? Seeing none. Mr. Cos, you have a need for an adjournment?
So moved.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. We'll see you next.